I like to recognize Councilman Johnny Dodd for recognizing special people in the audience.
Can I get the kids from Lincoln, please come up, please, and line up across the front? These are students from Lincoln School, they're student council, and mentor program they do at Lincoln School. We just wanted, I met with them a couple of weeks ago, and I talked to them about what there were city councilmen do. So I wanted them to come today and to realize, you know, these are our future, we have to support our school system, and we want them to come out and see what a city councilman do firsthand, and how we vote and what we talk about. So we all, please give him a hand.
Y'all need to know that if it wasn't Johnny Dodd, these kids probably wouldn't have been here. So we owe Johnny a lot of credit.
Okay, we'll call to order the meeting of the Jackson City Council, April 2nd, 2019. If you would please rise, and we're going to ask Councilman Ross Cready lead us in an invocation pledge.
Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for today, thank you for the opportunity to gather here, we thank you for our city and how you have provided for us, how you've seen us through tough times. God, we ask that you would continue to bless us in that way and guide us as we seek to serve one another, to love one another. Father, we pray that you would give us guidance today in these roles that we serve, help us to put aside personal agendas or what we think is best, but ultimately seek your will and what is best for our districts and our city as a whole, and I pray that we would seek outside wisdom and help us to move forward together in that way. God, we do pray today for Ms. Gigi and Pepper Bray and their health issues that they are experiencing, we pray that you would watch over them and heal them, and Father, we just pray for the time today that you would guide us in the way we should go. Thank you for providing for us in all things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anita, I think you can show all council members present. Adam 4th approval of the minutes of the March 5th, 2019 city council meeting, council members have received a copy of those minutes, if there are no additions or deletions or corrections, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Adam 5 is the invitation for public comment, if there's anyone here who'd like to be, like to address the council on any issue under new business, if you'll let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you. We got a bunch of stuff going on here this morning, we've got some proclamations, I'll come down and call the people up, and we'll get those proclamations read and acknowledge them. There, first proclamation, morning, is on, hello, okay, here we go. Would be equal payday, Stacy Miller, and any one here representing this particular issue, come on up, y'all have red coats on this morning. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of an equitable pay differential, and whereas according to statistics released in 2016 by the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women, 2015 earn only 80 percent of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to a January 2002 report released by the General Accounting Office, the investigative arm of Congress, women managers in seven of 10 industries surveyed actually lost ground in closing the wage gap between 1995 and 2000. And whereas according to analysis of data in over 300 classifications provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics in 2001, women earn less than every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women. And whereas higher education is not free from wage discrimination according to the U.S. Department of Education analysis, which reports that full-time female faculty members earn nearly 9 percent less than their male counterparts. And whereas over working lifetime, this wage disparity caused American women and her families 700,000 to 2 million in lost wages impacting social security benefits and pensions. Whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 10th, 2010, symbolizes the time this year which wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, we jury guests, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, as equal payday in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and contributions to the labor force and further encourage businesses to assure women are being paid fairly. So it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to you all, and again, thank you for bringing this issue to the forefront.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I'm Jackie Hillman, I'm president of Jackson Area Business and Professional Women, and what I would like to remind you today is that in 1920, 25 of your great-grandmothers went to the Carnegie Library and formed the first business and professional women in Jackson, and since that time, we have been moving and shaking and trying to change the world. When you think about the fact that Sue Shelton White, whose statue is out there on our plaza, ended up being a woman who changed Jackson, Nashville, Washington, and helped garner the right to vote for women across the United States, when you think about her, she was one of our presidents, and when you think about what she learned and what she knew being a businesswoman, in one day, back in 1917, when they were trying to organize women for the war effort, she set up committees in every county in Tennessee, and she organized 50,000 women in one day. That's a woman who knows how to work. And she ended up going to Washington and writing the Social Security Act, if you get a check from Social Security, you can thank Sue Shelton White of Jackson, Tennessee. But the point is that we're celebrating 100 years, 100 years of working for women and working for their families, and trying to ensure that we have the training and the education and the power to run business and industry and to support our families. Tonight, we will celebrate the Sterling Award winners, 20 most influential women in West Tennessee, the Outstanding Woman Military Veteran, and the Sue Shelton White Award winner. We hope you will join us at Hamilton Performing Arts Center at 6 o'clock. Many people have asked me why we started this in 2010, when Roy Heatherly was publisher of The Sun. We believe that there were women who needed to be honored for all of their work in West Tennessee. We had talked about it, and then we heard, and I hate to say this, a gentleman who was an executive somewhere here in West Tennessee, and I won't tell you who it was, who said, "You can't find 20 influential women in West Tennessee to give awards." Well, that was the wrong thing to say, because we just keep finding them and you keep nominating them, and it is the women who have trained since the war. When the President said, "Men are at war, we have got to have women here to run business and industry," and he set up a Women's War Work Council, and he asked that the National Federation of Businesswomen be formed, and Jackson, Tennessee was one of the first charter organizations in the United States. We've been here ever since, and we thank you for the honor of being here today. Thank you so much. I also wanted to thank Stacy Miller, who set this all up today. Thank you very much.
Jackie, thank you, and for bringing this issue always, each year, to the attention of the city, and we appreciate what you do. I know how you all are about photo ops, so we're going to do that right now, you all be patient. on up. Proclamation, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the City of Jackson, County of Madison, and whereas the City of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, share a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing. Whereas rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment impact our communities as seen by statistics indicating that 1 in 5 women and 1 in 10 women experience sexual assault in their lifetime, and there are approximately 502 reports of rape and/or sexual assault made to law enforcement in West Tennessee. 295 West Tennessee victims of sexual assault were served by RAP in 2016-17, and Jackson, Madison County General Hospital, S.A.N.E.S.T.R.A.T., performed 232 forensic exams, law enforcement interviews, or other proceedings in 2017-2018. And whereas current estimates suggest no more than 20 percent of sexual assault will be reported to law enforcement, and less than 3 percent will result in the conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. Whereas research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend, a family member, and when the loved ones respond with doubt, shame, blame, victims suffer additional negative effects on their physical, psychological well-being. And whereas the START BY BELIEVING Public Awareness Campaign, a program to end violence against women internationally, is designed to improve the response of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help victims to assess supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Whereas the City of Jackson, County of Madison strongly support the efforts of the national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence based on an attitude of belief. Now therefore, we, Mayor Guest, and Mayor Harris, on behalf of the City of Jackson, County of Madison, Tennessee, hereby proclaim our shared support of the START BY BELIEVING Public Awareness Campaign, and do declare the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to join RAP and all support services, programs, and beliefs that community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. In witness where we're here and to set our hands and call to seal, City of Jackson, Tennessee, and the County of Madison, Tennessee, to be affixed as 3rd day of April 2019. So it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to you all, and thank you so much for everything y'all do for our city and county.
My name is Tamar White, I'm the Sexual Assault Program Manager with RAP, and we have our, a couple of our Sexual Assault Coordinators and Domestic Violence Advocates here, and Jennifer McGraw, the Director of the Safe Hope Center. This year, RAP is wanting to shine a light on the remarkable strength and resiliency of survivors. Sexual violence is a severe interpersonal violation rooted in oppression and isolation and silence. Survivors face many barriers to disclosure and to seeking help, yet they persevere. The resilience that survivors demonstrate day after day is proof of the human capacity for growth, positive change, and movement towards health, even in the face of adversity. With the appropriate resources and support, survivors of sexual violence can overcome intense trauma and find healing and restoration. Sexual violence impacts the individual in profound ways, almost half of all survivors of sexual violence will experience symptoms of post-traumatic stress, and the effects don't end with the person who's been victimized. The climate of violence and fear that sexual violence engenders tears at the fabric of community well-being. We need to recognize that sexual violence is not a women's issue, it's not a men's issue, it's a community issue. Now is the time for our West Tennessee communities to come together and honor the incredible strength and courage survivors of sexual violence own every day, and to celebrate the resilience of our own communities. Together, our communities will let survivors know it's okay to speak their truth, and we will work hard to snuff out the stigma and shame that has been traditionally associated with sexual violence. All survivors deserve a safe place to seek help and to, most importantly, be who they are. Now is the time to uplift survivors, to let them know that they are strong, powerful, and amazing. Please join us as we celebrate the resilience of the human spirit by honoring survivors and the remarkable strength, perseverance, and courage they carry with them every day. Thank you.
of Child Abuse, if y'all will come up, accept the proclamation. Finally got a man up here. Thank you all for being here. Proclamation, whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem, changes life's path for nearly 4 million of our nation's children annually. And whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socio-economic, and geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. And whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes, and whereas the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse through its parent training, educational programs, and community service activities believes that parents and community members need to be the everyday superheroes in preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of family life for our children and families. Now therefore, we jury guests, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to use this time to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem, as the center helps our families build the extra mile to prevent abuse. Now we further commend the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse for its continued success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full public support for their successful efforts. So again, thank you all for what you do on a daily basis in our city, in our county, and West Tennessee. Come on up.
Most people don't realize, but child abuse is an epidemic. 1 in 10 children will be sexually abused before their 18th birthday. There are a lot of myths about child abuse. One is, "Well, I don't know anybody that's experienced that, so it really doesn't have anything to do with me." Everybody in here knows somebody who has experienced child sex abuse, whether you realize it or not. Child sex abuse is America's worst, best-kept secret, and it's kept in the dark. Our goal is to bring it to the light. Another myth is, it's strangers that does this to kids. 90 percent of the time, it's not strangers, it's somebody that that child knows, maybe even loves and trusts. So does that make it harder for kids to tell? Absolutely. It's so very confusing. There is hope, because child abuse is preventable. Our theme this year, we're using a Mary Poppins theme, and it is, "Anything is possible, prevent child abuse." So we work daily to help children find the light. There's so much darkness in child sex abuse especially, and we help them heal. Through our parenting programs, we help bring families together, because that's really the best way we can help children, is to help their families. Through our Relative Caregiver Program, we support those families who have taken in children and maybe don't have enough resources to meet the needs, and that's where the community helps us tremendously. And so what we want everyone to take a part in is that child abuse is preventable, so we need to educate, advocate, and report. It's very important that we report responsibly. So thank you to the community, to our volunteers, to our board members, and to the staff who work tirelessly so that each child that we come into contact with is better off because they receive services to help them bring the terrible tragedy of child abuse and turn it into something empowering for that child. Thank you.
Okay, y'all stay put. Delita, did I say you earlier? You out there? Come on up here. Delita belongs to us, come on up here. Are you the photographer, or, do we have a photographer?
Got a phone.
Okay, you need to be in it. There's a volunteer, I knew we'd get one. Okay. and we have Lenanda Jernigan here, who heads up our operation, and probably some of the people from Dispatch, and Paul Spencer. Y'all come on up. Morning, y'all. Hey, Paul, hey, Dave. Okay, this is a proclamation acknowledging National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas every day, 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators from the City of Jackson, Central Dispatch, Police and Fire, Madison County Sheriff's Office, Madison County Fire Department, Jackson MedLink, and the Tennessee Highway Patrol answer requests for emergency aid from the public with professionalism and compassion. And whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help, gather essential information, and assure that the appropriate assistance is provided have saved innumerable lives. And whereas the work of these 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators is invaluable and deserves public recognition and appreciation, and whereas in order to recognize the high-quality communication services provided by our 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators, the United States Congress designated the 3rd full week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and whereas Jackson and Madison County hereby honor and commend the 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, and steadfast purpose of their goals of protecting life and property. Now therefore, I jury guests, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of April 2nd, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and urge all residents to recognize and show appreciation to our valued 911 telecommunications staff. We do appreciate them, let's give them a big hand.
Fantastic group that we work with in Jackson, Madison County, as the mayor said. You've got several sets of dispatchers that answer that phone, that 911 phone, and as well as the public safety phone when it comes in. So we, they work in conjunction with one another, even though they're all over the city. So they work in conjunction with one another, even though they're all over the city and the county. The 911 dispatchers are the first responders, they are the calm voice in the dark, and together they do stand strong in their job that they do, 911 strong. Ask several of the dispatchers throughout to give me ten reasons that they love their doing their job, because we're talking about senior people here. Yeah, we've got a few in our department, each one of our departments, that have just started. We've got some that started in 1985. We've got some that started in 2000. So we've got longevity in 911. It is a very satisfying job and a career for an individual. So here are those ten reasons. My job is important. I serve my community. I work with heroes. I'm good under pressure. Every day is exciting and interesting. I'm there for people in need. I'm a central part of a team. I make a difference. I'm proud of what I do, and I help save lives. There's a saying on a tee-shirt that each one of the 911 operators should wear, and it says, "Tough enough to be a 911 dispatcher, and crazy enough to love it." We thank you, the citizens of Jackson and Madison County. And feel free, 911 is an emergency number, and it is for emergencies, and you do have a voice on the other end of that phone that's going to take care of you, before the team gets there to handle the rest. Thank you.
We want to ask some people to come up and address the council. They have petitioned the council to address them. First, we have the Arts Council representatives, we have Melinda Hearn, and I thank Board Chairman Monty Jones here. There they are. Morning, y'all.
On behalf of the Board of Directors, thank you for this opportunity to come and speak to the council. We've got several arts supporters with us this morning. We've got Arts Council Board members, as well as Arts Coalition members, and if it's okay, I'd like to ask them to stand at this time and be recognized.
Thank y'all for being here. Thanks for what you do.
We're very proud of our groups that we support, and we're very proud of the support that we get from them. We're also appreciative of this opportunity, and we'd like to say thank you for your continued support of the funding of the Arts Council, and investing in our mission of connecting and strengthening the arts. It is grant season at the Arts Council, and our Executive Director, Melinda Reed, will share a brief highlight on how your support has impacted the arts by way of grants in our community.
Good morning. As we are currently preparing our art groups for our upcoming Jack Grant and ABC Grant by way of conducting workshops, we just wanted to take a few minutes to reflect on their funded projects made possible by your support, and the impact that it has on Jackson, Madison County, as well as west Tennessee. Our ABC Grant in 2018 had nine grant recipients totaling over $12,000 in grant funding. The ask is always at least twice as much as we have available for these recipients. It is a very competitive grant program, and we have a citizens panel that scores the grant applicants, and the citizens panel truly reflects the makeup of our community, and they're very much invested in the arts. If you attended any of these events, you were directly impacted by the ABC Grant, Ballet Arts the Nutcracker, Brownsville Haywood Arts Council Rest College Concert, Community Multicultural Art Care Center, or C-Max event at the Dream Center, Jackson Coral Society's Concerts, Jackson Symphony League's Color of Music, Jackson Theater Guild's Productions in the Fall and Spring, River Time Players in Decatur County had an art event for Theater Camp, and Lane College has an event going on in their garden. And the Star Centers in conjunction with Eden, and that's an art exhibit that resulted in that very special project. Additionally, our Jack Grant in 2018 had four recipients totaling $13,000 in grant funding. Also, that had a, the ask was at least twice as much as what we had available for those incredible grant recipients. We're very proud of that program. That started in 2008, and that is funded directly by your support, the city, as well as the county. If you attended Starlight Symphony, any of the Jackson Theater Guild's Productions, Jackson Downtown Development Corporations Night Event, as well as Ballet Arts the Nutcracker, then you were directly impacted by the Jack Grant. We do thank you so much for your continued support to help us connect and strengthen the arts. We've been going strong for at least fifty years now in Jackson, and your support allows us to not only continue this, our grant programs, but to serve our community, strengthen and connect art and cultural organizations through grant workshops, advocacy opportunities, networking opportunities, publicity, and so much more. So thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you do for our city. This is the umbrella that covers all of our arts groups here in our city, and do a great job. Thank you all, and especially to your board.
You bet.
Thank you. When'd you get married? When'd you get married?
October 2017.
Okay. All right, good for you. Good for you. Okay. Okay, the next recognition is a group of ladies who have excelled and been great ambassadors for our city. Let me ask the Lane College family to come up front, and I'll meet you down here. I think we are honored to have the President of Lane College here this morning, Dr. Logan Hampton, a good friend of ours. Let's give him a hand.
As I indicated earlier, this group of ladies excels, not only for their institution of higher learning, but also for this city. Not only do they possess great abilities on the basketball court, but also have been great ambassadors for our city, they traveled throughout the mid-south in their efforts in basketball. I have some mayor's commendations, which I'm going to present to them, but first, let me present the coaches and some other folks who provide guidance for this team throughout the year. Let me read one of these, and we'll get the same, basically the same certificates, all of them. The mayor's commendation, it is, is hereby presented to Lane College Lady Dragons, and the name, in recognition of your hard work, dedication, achievement, in your win of the 2019 Southern Athletic Intercollegiate Women's Basketball Championship. These are the champions right here, the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and the team.
We have also mayor's commendations for some of the staff, the coaches, and other folks. Roger Ogden, the Sports Information Director, eBay wants to accept, yeah, thank you. Then also, the assistant coach of Lady Dragons, Kenneth White. And also, assistant coach of Lady Dragons, Latrice Ragland. Then also, the head coach of the Dragons, Kimberly Anderson. Then the big cheese of athletics, Lane College, Athletic Director Derek Burrows. Before I present the certificates to the players, let me call on Dr. Logan Hampton to come up and address the group, and then Kimberly, I'll ask you, if you would, if you'd like to say a word, then we'll get the certificates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City of Jackson, and certainly my pleasure to celebrate these women and these coaches, who against all odds, against the world, it was them against everybody, and no one expected them to win. We've not had great success in the SIC Conference. In fact, in my tenure, the women had not won a game in the tournament. They go to the tournament, and they come right back home. This year, they went to the tournament, they won their first game, and we celebrated back home. Then they went, and they faced the number-one team, fifteen and oh, the team that had beaten them, and they beat those women going away. Then they won the semifinal, they got in the championship game, and Antrice, at the end of the championship game, Antrice is driving, she gets fouled, she gets knocked to the ground, she throws the ball over her shoulder, the ball falls through the bottom of the net, and the Lord moved in a mighty way, and these women won that championship. Y'all give it up for the Lane College Dragons. The head coach of Lady Dragons.
May I thank you, Dr. Dobbs. I also want to thank you for inviting us out to celebrate this occasion, and still, I want to give glory to God. I always quote Philippi 4:13, "I can do all things through Christ that strengthens me." So I thank God for these young ladies. I thank God for my Athletic Director Derek Burrows, President Hampton, for all the support. I'm just overwhelmed with joy to have these young ladies in my presence, and to me, to have these young ladies, it's more than I can speak of, because they hung in with me as I hung in with them. And I just, I thank them for everything that they did, the hard work that they put forth, I even had injuries, but they persevered, and I just, ladies, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for being a part of this program, and I could not do it without you, and I thank you. And for my coaching staff, I thank you. I am truly, truly blessed to have a family like Lane College.
Okay, I think the way we're going to work this, Dr. Hampton, if you'd come back up, I have a little item, just as a memento to you, and if you would give, Derek, here's this little tail pin with the official seal of the City of Jackson, Tennessee. The guys will get one of those, and the girls will get something that belongs to girls. That would be a stick pin with the official seal of the City of Jackson, along with your mayor's commendations. So again, congratulations to y'all. Coach, I think what I'll do is, let me let you have the stack commendations. You call the player's name, I will present, if you'll give that name, I'll present it to them, shake their hands. And the girls, if you will be kind enough, y'all step forward just a little bit, I'm going to ask each of y'all to walk by the council, if you would, and just shake their hands, and you can step up, and we'll go next.
Well, I know.
Antrice McCoy, my senior.
Again, let's give them a big hand. We want to ask some people to come up and address the council. They have petitioned the council to address them. First, we have the Arts Council representatives, we have Melinda Hearn, and I thank Board
about the good things that are happening in CRA District One. I'd like to recognize also any of the CRA Board members that are in attendance today to stand. Appreciate all their efforts. And also want to thank you, Mayor Gist, for your strong support over the last several years, for supporting Hal Crocker and Henry Turley's vision to work with some community partners to revitalize our downtown and center-city area of Jackson, and you know, what an amazing difference it's been over the last, you know, six years. It's hard to believe that we have been coming back and forth for six years now since Jackson Walk was open for business. You know, the Lift Wellness Center celebrated their sixth anniversary in January of this year. Our Jackson Walk Apartments, the initial phase, are celebrating their sixth anniversary this June. You know, they've had so much success with those apartments, you know, we built 120 more over at the High Point Apartments over at the Old West Jackson Church area, 120 units there. We've got three left to rent, so they're almost fully leased already. So just showing that we've helped kind of create an environment, a community where folks want to come, live, work, play type deal. Between the two apartments, we've added about 500 residents, you know, to the core of our city, which is helping to bring in more retail, more restaurants, more quality of life, which is crucial for the City of Jackson to thrive. No matter if you live out north, south in Bemis, east-west, it's crucial for any city to have a thriving downtown. You know, ask Kyle Spurgeon and Ryan Porter with the Chamber how important it is, as they're bringing in new industry, trying to recruit these folks to come to Jackson to see the quality of life that we've got here, and to keep the folks that we have, and to expand existing businesses. It's crucial that we have great quality of life here in our core. The Lift Wellness Center is maintaining their base of over 500 members. The Lift Health Care, excuse me, 5,000 members, yes. Lift Health Primary Care Clinic is providing great health care for those in the downtown, midtown community. Talking about our single-family homes, you know, the new High Point area, talk about the new apartments, we also have 40 lots for single-family homes. John Ellis has started building several new homes over there, you know, a couple recently that he built on Johnson Street, you know, he got full-price offers before construction was complete, you know, it's just great to see this happening. You know, our goal from the outset, when we were hired as the master developer for District One, you know, was to remove slum and blight from that district and improve the neighborhoods, and one of our goals was to improve the connectivity between downtown Jackson Walk and the new University of Memphis taking over the Lambeth Campus. You know, I don't know if y'all recall or not, but you know, right about the time that we were breaking ground was when it was up in the air whether, you know, Lambeth was gonna close for good or University of Memphis to step in, and so what a great community asset that University of Memphis has become, and glad that we can partner with them and have a little connectivity pathway where their students, faculty can walk and bike back and forth between campus and downtown. In the last six years, we've built 36 new single-family homes, and these new homes have added value of over $7 million to the neighborhood. We've got 15 commitments for new home starts this year. So you know, that first year, we only built two homes, you know, the next year it was maybe four. We built 10 new homes last year, 15, it's just kind of having a snowball effect, and we've got plenty of vacant lots in the area to build more and more new homes, so we're having a lot of success there. And of those 36 new homes that we've built in the last six years, nine of those have been built through a THDA grant that we got, was Neighborhood Stabilization Program, to build some affordable housing. So we've got, you know, across the spectrum, affordable housing to, you know, higher-end housing, we've got a little bit of something for everybody, and I don't think there's any place in Jackson where you can have folks living in a $50,000 house down the street from somebody living in a $250,000 house, and these neighbors just get along great, and you know, just love the area. One of the second houses that we sold six years ago, that family has had a couple of children and growing, they like the area so much, they just need more space, they're building a house almost twice as big just right down the street, you know, so we're just loving to see that aspect of it. The next deal is Brian James has spearheaded another grant that we went out to THDA and bugged them until we got it. Jackson was not one of the original cities that was set up for this blight elimination program, but through our diligent efforts, we ended up getting them to let us participate, and since then, we've been basically their top producer across the state. Brian?
Good morning, Mayor Gist and Councilmembers. Excuse me, I'm thrilled to give an update on our efforts in eradicating blight within the community. Chris started on this program a little after June of 2017, and thus far, we have been able to demo 33 blighted properties within the community. A lot of legwork goes into demoing those properties, definitely, excuse me, thanks to the City of Code Enforcers, they definitely help us out a lot. With the blight elimination program, THDA gives us about $25,000 for each property, to demo that property, and we use about $14,000 to acquire the property, and the remainder of those funds are used for demolition purposes and closing costs. And so I got a couple of pictures, I thought we were having a couple of slides, to show you some progress of what it looks like when we demo a property. We have seen great efforts in improving the streetscape of that street, and so a lot of this helps the community out and our neighborhoods, and as of now, like I said earlier, we have 33 properties to demo. By the end of 2018, we expect to have 30 more properties demolished, and this program is a great program for the city right now, and we're thrilled to be able to have as much success as we're having on the program right now. And we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the community and the neighbors within the community regarding this program, and in conjunction to another program that we have, is the Tennessee Renovation Loan Program. Their program is helping assist low-income homeowners, seniors, and veterans who may need to repair basic functions of their house, including roof, electrical, plumbing, any energy improvement that can be made, and we're extremely excited to be working on their program as well. And this program will definitely help. The blight elimination program, since we got a lot of the blight out, it'll be good to repair some of those existing homes that are already in their neighborhood, and the blight elimination program is a great tool for that.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, through our efforts and working with a lot of these THDA grants, you know, we've just had a lot of success with that, making our neighborhoods safer, you know, nobody wants to live on a street with a vacant house, you know, boarded-up house, you got vagrants coming in and out, children playing, and you know, just not good things happening with these abandoned homes, and so it's great to hear stories from the neighbors of, you know, just thanking us profusely about removing those eyesores, you know, from the neighborhood, and it's had immediate impact on their property values, too. And on top of this, with being able to give money to the homeowners, they're able to put some money in their pocket, get rid of these blighted homes, but also we're hiring, you know, we have a bid process, demo contractors that are getting paid to tear down these homes, instead of the city using their services, you know, to tear down these blighted properties, too. And eventually, we'll be able to build back on these properties, and we look forward to working with Habitat for Humanity, Jonah Affordable Housing, which I think is gonna be talking in a little bit, there's, you know, an opportunity for us to basically donate these lots, so that they can build back some affordable housing there. So anyway, THDA has recognized us for our efforts and what we've been doing through the NSP and the BEP program. At their Tennessee Governors Housing Conference, their annual housing conference in Nashville three weeks ago, the CRA was nominated for three awards, an Impact Award, Neighborhood Revitalization Award, and a Leadership Award. And so with our great partnership with them, we just see, as they get more resources down the pipe, that they're gonna let us participate, which will be good.
The awards given to the CRA certainly comes as no surprise to me, because it has several years of hard work in rebuilding our central city. It's been absolutely amazing, Brian and Chris, on what we've done as far as blight removal, and we were over at Lambeth, U of M Lambeth, about two weeks ago, to receive an award for the city because of our part that we played in acquiring the Lambeth Campus under bankruptcy, and council may remember, some of it, well, anyway, where we contributed $2 million to a total of $8 million. We found three good partners to join us in that effort, and bought that university, and then Governor Haslam and the General Simmons were kind enough to take it over, make it a four-year institution, a public institution of higher learning for a city, which has been a tremendous asset. So y'all are certainly to be commended for your hard work, y'all have done a great job, and hopefully all that will continue to grow our central city. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, thank y'all, thank you, CRA District One.
I would just like to thank the CRA One and Two for your hard work and staying, especially with the blight. We've locked down a lot of houses and made a lot of people happy within the community, because it was a major issue, and with the other organization working with us to bring back affordable homes is our goal, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Stan, you got District Eight?
I'll give you an update. If you'll, some of you will remember, this process has been in place since 2009, so we're coming close to our 10th anniversary on the establishment of the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Redevelopment Plan in the two districts that we're currently operating now. So in 10 years, I feel like we've made tremendous progress. We've seen a lot of, as has been mentioned, a lot of homes that were blighted come down. We've seen a lot of new construction, and we've seen things happen in areas that, I see a common theme in all these groups that we've seen this morning, it seems like anytime there's a vision, people immediately assume you're crazy, and a lot of people thought we were crazy. If you remember Wells Morgan, that area before the redevelopment efforts, they thought it would never work, they thought we were crazy in what we were attempting, but we've shown that with vision, we can accomplish great things, and so we've seen tremendous efforts in District One and District Two. Some of the highlights that I want to mention in District Two are, we've finished our leased space in the shopping center there on Whitehall, and most of those slots are filled up right now. We saw a little bit of setback with the Huddle House, again, that had nothing to do with performance, had more to do with management, and so our master developers working with other businesses to occupy that space. We've also, we partnered with Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity to establish a community center on Hayes, and so in Dr. Wright's old dental office, they have rehabbed that facility, and they had their grand opening last weekend, and so we're looking forward to the great things that they're gonna do in that area and for the community. We also are invested in the New Hub Club, which is in District Two. We have seen tremendous progress in the upgrading of that facility and the improvements there, and this facility has a long history of doing great things for children, being a support to children that need support, helping them to find ways to succeed, and we see the work continuing with that facility. So if you ever get a chance to go out there, it's amazing how good that facility looks, and we're just looking for great things there. So you know, there's a lot of things that go into redevelopment, we do see commercial development, we see residential development, but some of the other things that we support are the social structure to help in the lives of the people that live there, because we want them to benefit from the efforts that we make, because if we don't pull everyone up, then we'll never see the area fully reach its potential. So it's important that we invest in these social organizations to see the areas of the people and the lives of those people changed. So not only are we changing the fabric of these neighborhoods, but we're also changing the lives of the people in them. So I feel good about the efforts, I look forward to us continuing those efforts, and we are seeing the fruits of those labors.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Powell, good morning.
Yes, sir.
Everything you said, I agree with, but the strip mall is still lacking with two or three offices to be filled on Whitehall.
There's still a restaurant slot, yes.
With respect to the Huddle House, I understand from the developer that something will be announced soon.
Yes, sir.
And that he has purchased 40 acres next to Foss Hill Subdivision for future single-family residential?
That is my understanding, he's working on that project, yes, sir.
He has purchased that land, though.
I can't verify that, but...
I just verified it with Mr. Eaton Smith. Mr. Eaton sold it to him.
Right.
Okay, so we're looking forward to a single-family residential next to Foss Hill Subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Yep, Mr. Eaton owned it, and he sold it to him, so we're looking forward to that. Let me say this, with all due respect, the blight is coming down, but we need to build some homes, and they're coming up next, and I won't get you into that, you're off the hook.
Well, I understand, and we, that is a goal within the, in District Two, is to not only see the commercial and economic development come, but also the rooftops. Without the rooftops, there's nothing to support the commercial development, and so both of them go hand in hand. Our thrust in the beginning, based on the redevelopment plan that we had established for District One, the community said they wanted jobs, they wanted economic development, and so all of our efforts have, or most of our efforts have been centered around creating developments that create new jobs, and not only new jobs, but new jobs for the people that live in the area. Now, going forward, we have plans to further the residential development that we have on Whitehall. We also are gonna see opportunities to infill residential development in the areas around what we called our Parkview Transformation Project, which is the area where Parkview Court was located. We've seen some residential development, but we want to see some more.
As you well know, the census is coming up next year, and it's gonna begin to fall. It's essential and important that we begin to build up the East Jackson area with respect to residential, we have to have the numbers.
Yes, sir.
So it's coming up soon.
And I am working with the mayor, the mayor has already met with representatives of the Census Bureau, and will be enlisting the support of key people in the community to make sure that we are accurately counted, to make sure we get the benefit of everyone in those areas.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council for Stan? Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor.
One major partner of the city in providing low-cost affordable housing is our Southwest Human Resources Agency, so let's call them next. I know Patty is here, and she may have some people with her. We appreciate them partnering with our city and what they're doing throughout mainly East Jackson.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If it be in order, I'd like to have Southwest Human Resource Agency, Jonah Affordable Housing, and Habitat for Humanity all together with respect to affordable housing.
We got enough seats up, you wanna call them up here first time, at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we not have enough seats. If y'all come on up. Okay, if y'all would be kind enough to introduce yourself to the council, if you would.
Good morning, my name is Patty Pickler, I'm the Director of Southwest Tennessee Community Development Corporation at Southwest HRA.
I'm Andrea Hudgens, I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity.
I'm Harold Nance, Executive Director for Jonah Affordable Housing here in Jackson.
Okay, very good, thank y'all. Patty, you wanna start us off?
Yes, sir. As Stan mentioned, we are the ones who have been developing the Whitehall Corner at Dupree. We are very excited to see the Whitehall Elementary School being reopened. About the time we started building our two houses, it closed, and traffic just pretty much died in the area, so we're happy to see that coming back and energizing the neighborhood. But we have sold the two houses that we originally built and are in the process of starting the next two. We have a contract with CRA and the Jackson Housing Authority's Genesis Committee to build five houses. We build two at a time, sell them, take the proceeds, reinvest into the area. So if things continue as they are, we hope to build more than the original five with the contract, as long as we can recycle the proceeds from the sale of the houses. the contract, as long as we can recycle the proceeds from the sale of the houses. We have over five lots purchased already in the area and we've been working with Brian and the BEP, give him a list of some houses down Dupree to look at for the blight elimination program in hopes of improving that entire neighborhood. But most importantly, or most recently, Southwest Tennessee CDC was awarded a 2017 home grant and we will be building three new roofs on Southern Street, close to the Washington Douglas project. We already own one property over there and have purchased the lots and will soon be constructing three additional homes. And I have provided you pictures of the projected elevations and floor plans for all of the next five houses that we'll be building here in the City of Jackson.
Okay. Thank you, Patty. Any questions of council as far as Southwest CRA's involvement with our city in providing affordable housing? Okay. No, thank you, Patty. Habitat?
Thank you for allowing us to be here and just update you guys on what all we're doing. We've been around since 1986 and so far have built 102 homes here in Jackson. So that's been around a 4.2 million investment in residential affordable housing here since then. And then hundreds of thousands of dollars put back on the tax roll. So we, along with others, are excited to be able to do that here in Jackson. Thank you, Mayor, for coming for our 103rd groundbreaking that we just had in our Habitat Meadows subdivision out on East College. That'll be our final lot in that development. And then our next build, our 104th build, will be on Hale Street. So that's some of the areas that we kind of want to clean up. And that's actually a property you guys donated to us, that vacant lot. We're partnering with the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati and their community investment grant. We've been awarded that for our next two builds. We hope that continues to happen. And as well, one of the things we're working on with Memphis Habitat and Habitat of Tennessee is to serve seniors over 60 that are in their homes, homeowners, being able to do minor repairs and modifications to their home. So we know that our senior population continues to grow and we want to be able to allow them to be in their home and do those minor modifications that we can do. One of the things that I think is a statistic we need to keep in mind is the fair market value for a two-bedroom house here in Jackson is $775, where someone on minimum wage can only afford a $377 rent. So that's one of the things we keep in mind. Our next house that we're building, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath. That escrow and principal is only going to be around $450. So we think as long as we can continue to build, we feel like we're making a big impact in Jackson. Our Board of Directors, we've decided on a strategic plan to three or four houses a year from here on out, as well as serving multiple families through our home repair program, so.
Thank you all. You do a great job. Did I hear you say that you all had built out on College Street?
Yes.
Last construction? How many homes are in that?
I think there's 20 homes through there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I've done a good job in that, on that project for sure. Okay. Any questions, council? If not, Jonah?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buchanan, for inviting me. Thank you, Mayor. We are pretty much in the rental business, probably unlike everybody else here. We see that there's a need for rental homes. We know that the demographic that we serve is basically the people who make 80% of the median income in the area in which they live and below. The last two houses that we constructed here in Jackson were two duplexes with the assistance of Federal Home Loan Bank. And those were aimed at individuals 60 years and older. And we think that meets a good demographic for the people that we try to serve. We're looking into doing some homeownership, but we lack the rental plane. And to be honest about it, we all know that there's always a need for good rental housing. The one thing that we really pride ourselves on is just being a good, decent landlord. We just will not have any tour of houses, raggedy houses, or whatever. We fix our houses, we fix them back, we pay our taxes, we think we're a decent landlord. And we have the intention to do that probably three or four houses per year going forward. We normally get our funding from Jackson Housing Authority, THDA, and Federal Home Loan Bank, and those have been good folks. But we found out also as a 501(c)(3), one of the most important things you can do is ask for individuals to make donations. And so we are in a drive to raise about $1.3 million from individual donations. So if anybody has a lot of money that they want to give to a good organization, we would love to have it because we will put it to good use. Our goal actually is to try to do a $1.3 million campaign over the next two years, with more than half of that being used here in Jackson, because we also serve Crockett County, Haywood County, and Gibson County. But we've had a good relationship here. We've enjoyed it. We think we meet a need in the city. We appreciate the city for working with us as hard as you have and we'll continue to do a good job as best as we can.
Harold, thank you all for what you do for our city. Do you know offhand the number of rental units you have in Jackson?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, I just have a general statement. I thank you all for coming. I asked you all to come along with CRA, along with the Jackson Housing Authority for one particular reason: housing, housing, housing development. We need it in Jackson. It is solidated. Now, the Environmental Court is doing a great job with respect to turning down. We need to build up now. There are 188 private vacant lots in East Jackson. There are 114 city and county vacant lots. Altogether, there's 302 vacant lots. We urge you to do something about those vacant lots. I don't know if you do blending and braiding of funds. It may be illegal if you all, the blending and braiding funds with each organization, I don't know.
No.
But together or separate, I don't know how y'all do it, but I am urging you to let's get better with our housing development in Jackson, in particular, East Jackson. I thank you so much.
Thank you all for taking the time to be with us.
Thank you.
I appreciate your partnering with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have an update. CDGB Services and Development from the Jackson Housing Authority's Community Development Office. Latonya, I think, is here to bring that report.
Director's here also, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Good to see you, Mark. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For those of you that don't know me, I am Latonya Faison with the Community Development Program at the Jackson Housing Authority and the city. And this is Mr. Mark Reed, Executive Director of the Jackson Housing Authority. The Community Development Program receives funding each year from HUD, CDBG, or Community Development Block, Grant Home Fund and Home Funds. In the past, we've also received the NSP funds. And so I'll be brief on my update because for the most part, everyone that we fund has updated you up. Over the last five years, we've approximately spent $1.5 million in community development block grant funds and home funds on affordable housing. That includes acquisition, rehab, new construction, and down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. And with the help of those that have reported, we fund them to do those types of projects as well as we do our own housing rehabilitation in-house. Over the last year alone, we've spent $406,000 to provide those activities, providing assistance to 28 housing units. And for the five years, we provided 153 housing units with assistance, with that $1.5 million On the economic development side, again, we provided CDBG funding and NSP funding for the CRA District One and Two, so you've received that update. Going forward, funding has always, has been an issue. When I began, when I started working in 2000, we received like $800,000 in CDBG funds. We could provide assistance to approximately 50 housing units. Now we receive about $500,000 in CDBG funds and half of that goes to the payback of the Section 108 loan. So it becomes a struggle when trying to do affordable housing, but we continue to push forward. Okay? And Mr. Mark will update you on the Jackson Housing Authority.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, guests, council. The Jackson Housing Authority, although we're federally funded by the government, we operate in the city to provide quality housing and supporting services for low and moderate-income persons. Currently, our grants come to about $10,000, $10 million, which does not exclude the CDB funds, which she's talking about that we operate with. We have, currently, we own and or operate 1,032 low-income units in the city. We also administer 1,450 Section 8 vouchers in the city here. Since 2003, Jackson Housing Authority, we have strategically planned to revitalize its housing stock due to some of it being obsolete or demand changes in the low-income housing market within the city. Since the completion of the newly constructed 28 single-family homes on Philip Street and Carmel Street, and the construction of 48 newly constructed one-bedroom units at the Parkview site, Jackson Housing Authority, we continue to streamline our mission. Currently, we are in the process of attempting to increase the number of modern affordable housing units and also replace the obsolete units at Lincoln Courts, which consists of 215 units, and to replace the 100 units at Allison Heights. That is in our current five-year plan for the Jackson Housing Authority. During the 2018 fiscal year, we renovated 31 units at the Kingfield South apartment complex on North Royal Street and also added 10 new construction units to that site. Also, we had another complexization to Kingfield South. We call it Kingfield North, and we constructed 40 new units, one- and two-bedroom units there. During the 2019 calendar year, we are pursuing funding to replace the obsolete units at Allison and Lincoln. This is a challenge, but we are in talks with HUD and other state funding agencies to make this happen. Last and least, at the Jackson Housing Store, we are promoting Jackson Housing Authority's FSS program. We just received another grant for $234,000 to help prepare our low-to-moderate-income residents for better education and employment opportunities. We're also linking them to Tennessee Reconnect and Job Training Classes in hopes of increasing their earning income and equipping them with these opportunities along with financial literacy and home buyer education classes will lead them to better chances of becoming future homeowners. On the Section 8 side, we're also hoping to increase the stock and affordable housing here. We have increased our payments from averaging $500,000 in landlords' payments to $700,000 as of last month. And by us increasing the payments and better stock, we're able to give our residents low-income a better choice of where to live and not just put them all in one area. So, and on that note, man, you know, we want to thank the City of Jackson and especially your Planning Department, JEA and JPD. When we were doing the tax credit, Kingfield, those were done with tax credit through THDA. We were on a very stringent timeline with the large amount of rain during 2018. We were pushed back against the wall. But everybody pulled together and we just want to say thank you to this great city for partnering with us.
Thank you, Mark. Y'all put together some great projects just within the past 10 or 12 years, especially the last one that I had the opportunity to attend the dedication on Kingfield and North Royal. A great development. Happy people.
Yes, sir.
Moving in those units. So thank you. Any other questions from council?
Mayor, I'd just like to say thank for everyone for the update. So it is showing the community that we are making efforts to make a focus on black apartment housing and cleaning up the community. And we are making effort coming back with affordable housing. So when y'all hear the community going around saying that we're not doing that, making them efforts, please let them know to call these people and that we are making strides and we are improving and making the progress in a positive manner. I would like to thank Ms. Vicki Lake and the other members of the CRA Board and Stan. Thank you for what you do. And I thank Ms. Nell was back in the back. But I want to thank you all for your hard work and all the other organizations that's making it happen in this community. Thank you.
So one more thing. We are still pursuing those tax credits that we got. They're very competitive. Nashville, Knoxville, Memphis always beat us out. But at Kingfield, we were able to get $9 million of tax credit. That's the reason we were able to build that site. We're preparing to go back now to get more tax credit, but it's a very competitive market. But every year, we have a team that studies the QAP, which is the road to get the credits. And so we want to help increase the affordable housing here in Jackson.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Mark, thank you. Latonya, thank you. Final recognition would be Jackson Madison County NAACP President Harold Carter regarding some property located at the intersection of West Lefest Street and West Main Street. Harold, if you will, come on up.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
Mayor. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity and time to address this issue. On the agenda, of course, I believe it was heard, the agenda review meeting in reference to a property located on the Main and Lefest Street, which is this triangle piece of property. We had asked the use of that property to have it as a historical landmark for a lot of the city residents, African-American included, that has not been recognized from previous opportunities. We look at this as a part of recognizing all people here in the City of Jackson. The City of Jackson is made up, I believe, about roughly 64,000, 65,000 residents, of which 57% of African-American are better. When we look at the lack of recognition that goes unknowing because we obviously don't know our history to the point that what it took to make this city great. We're recognizing it here at City Hall with the people of change out there, including Mr. Buchanan, Councilman, and others. But the recognition that we're talking about is those that yet go unnoticed, those like Dr. M. V. Lincoln, those others who represented, like Elway after the Civil War. Several people that go unrecognized. We realize that we have a park that's going to have the seven pillars, recognizing several giant figures in the African-American community. My point and understood that the vote in the pre-agenda meeting not to vote with a favorable was that this was not going to go forward. My point in speaking to you is the fact that we're still lacking. I've heard all the great things that is happening in the City of Jackson and it is wonderful. And for that, you should be commended on what has happened. Unfortunately, there's a significant number of other people here in the city that lack that type of cohesiveness and consistency. We do have issues and problems and we'll have those going forward with their education, opportunities for employment, affordable housing. It's been well documented and mentioned. We've got a lot of work to do. But the recognition on the triangle point was to highlight those things that has happened in this community over the last several, well, for almost a century. We look at this area, not just looking at one particular segment of our population. I was told that there was a committee already being formed and had some ideas about what's going forward on that piece of property. I have not seen it. One of the things that we're looking at is not only making sure that African-Americans and others are included in the decision, that's city property, so we should have some say-so. Recognizing the fact that it belongs to every citizen in the City of Jackson, that piece of property, not just to a few. Now, I would like for this to become a unified effort instead of just a small group of people who wants to keep things in such a way that it excludes others. Let's face it, we do have a race problem with NAACP. We recognize that in various ways in our city. School system, we look at the criminal justice system, we look at the opportunities for employment. We have a high rate of poverty in our city. And that does not exclude what I've heard here today. That's great, but obviously more is needed. We have to do more. Now, obviously, there's limits to what you can do, but it's also, should be something that's factored in in any future decision. I know that a lot of you are leaving us, the council. I know that a lot of you are leaving this, the council, but we have to start looking at what is the impact of the things, the decisions that we make, particularly for our young people. We put a lot of money in brick and mortar and not enough into education. We put a lot of money in those things that highlight a small percentage of our communities but does not reflect the values of everyone. This is still a problem, and I know that, and I know all of you, you've done the best that you could. We certainly have had our differences, but I think going forward for future councils that'll be sitting here and those that remain, we need to recognize that when we make decisions, that it needs to be more inclusive. When we look at our city council, when we look at the one-man, one-vote principle, talking about the census coming up, it does not reflect the population of this city of one-man, one-vote. We can do better, and we must do better. We have to start trusting more of each other and preparing others for leadership, but it's going to take leadership from this council going forward in the future to make sure that everyone is included. If there's a piece of property that can be utilized to help unite us, then let's do that. Will this committee, will, will it represent the true makeup of this city that goes forth with whatever decade that you might have for that piece of property? We talk about the lift area, and that is fine, but for the people that live there, they pay very little in rent, but for those that get back there, they cannot afford it, and those people are displaced. We do not have enough affordable housing. That's why you see a lot of couches and chairs and furniture thrown out. It's not that the people are lazy, that they don't want to, they can't afford it. They can live at a few places for a few months before they have to leave. I beg of you to understand that this community has changed, is changing, but until we correct a lot of the inequities that we still have, and again, I've heard exactly what has been taking place, and all of that is good, all the agencies and people that make, make up the different organizations, but there's so much more that we can do, so much more that we have to do because we've got a high poverty rate, high incarceration rate, recidivism, high graduation rate, but less in terms of those people that can actually go on to the next level is very difficult. We got work to do, and I'm just stopped by to say that let's do it together and not just isolate a majority of your citizens to a life that is not, not worthy of this city. We can do a lot better job. And again, I want to thank you for your service, thank you for your time, and let's keep talking about the issues of race because it is, it is one of those things that in this city, it is heavy, and the burden needs to be shared, but there's also a possibility of solutions, but we have to take time to talk with one another, see each one of us for what it is. No such things, I don't see color. We see everybody for who they are, but let's see if we can't make it better going forward in the future because what we're doing now is delaying issues that we could very well solve on the front end and not wait till they become so explosive. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, President Carter. We do, I think we all agree, we, we do have a lot of work to do. Appreciate you appearing before the council. Item eight, first readings, consideration ordinance to rezone property located at 2192 Hollywood Drive from B5 Highway Business District to AO Agriculture and Open Land District comprising Point 427 acres, submitted by David Bailey on behalf of Leroy Johnson Trust. Stan?
Mayor and council, you have the materials per this rezoning request. The property that's being requested for rezoning is a small strip of property, and it's thirty feet in, in width, that adjoins a larger tract that is to the west, southwest of this property, and the property owner wants to sell off two acres of property that's along Hollywood Drive to Abrabody Shop to develop, but it left a remnant tract that was not wide enough to meet the current zoning, so they are asking you to rezone it so that it will meet requirements and they can complete the subdivision. And we, we did present this to the Planning Commission, and they are recommending approval of it to you.
Okay, council, any questions? Stan? Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. Before we, before we vote, this is an ordinance on first readings, which necessitates a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing now and ask if there's anyone wishing to be heard on this matter. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second. I'm in favor. Please vote.
Motion passes with eight members in favor, one absent at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan. Item two is consideration proposed revision to the refuse and trash disposal ordinance.
So moved.
Wait, okay. We, we already have a, a motion, so let's, let's hear from people who put it together.
I have a question, if may.
Yes, yes.
Jump into it right quick. Basically, who is this, under the trash and bulk of waste? That, that codifies the responsibility of, I guess, construction people or any others on your property, correct?
Someone that cuts their own limbs, sets them out on the curb, this honey cutter crew will handle. Someone that cuts it for a living, for profit, needs to make that part of their job.
Right. And is there any teeth in that to enforce that? That, that would be my only question is, how will we enforce that? Because we know that's a huge problem.
We've had in the past, we're going to.
You can cite them in, to environmental court? Okay. And Kathleen, I guess, secondly, and I want to thank you for coming out to our neighborhood meeting, and, and we know what we're dealing with, a lot of questions. I just got a message that there's a refrigerator in an area. What, what, what do we need to tell our constituents relative to that?
About appliances?
Appliances or anything?
Refrigerators and freezers have freon.
Yes.
And that needs to be removed by a certified appliance person, and they will put a sticker on it, and that lets us know that it has been removed, and then we can.
Is that a code violation as well?
There is no code specific to that, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We'll need a second to go ahead and continue with the public hearing.
Second.
We have a second. This is a, an ordinance on the first reading, which necessitates a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, see if there's anyone who'd like to speak in favor of or in opposition to pass this ordinance. Here ain't none, we'll close the public hearing, and is there a second? Yeah, we have a second. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one absent at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Second readings, we have consideration of ordinance to annex and ordinance to zone an area referred to as Amherst Breeze, generally located in northeast quadrant of Cooper Anderson Road, Robert Metta Drive and East University Parkway comprising one point three acres, more or less. Proposed zoning for this annexation area is RAS 1PRD, Single Family Residential Plan Residential Development District.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Also, under second reading, council has approved this on first reading, consideration of ordinance to rezone property in northeast quadrant.
Move the adoption.
Move, we have a motion for adoption, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, under new business, consideration of contract for constructing the Jackson Animal Care Center, swipe. And Dr. Lake, if you're.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I had a question, if, if, if may. We originally budgeted one point three.
Sam Dawson will have to give you those figures.
Where's Sam?
He is on a conference call, a ten-thirty conference call. I asked him if he would be back in time for this.
He's coming right there.
Oh, good.
Mr. Trump, why is coming? Tell us about the donation and the forthcoming donation.
This, Vicky Lake, the foundation, the West to Sea Healthcare Foundation has received a donation in the amount of hundred thousand dollars, and the donor stipulated fifty thousand right now, and the, the city does have those funds, and then fifty thousand upon completion. And the funds are all at the foundation.
Councilman Brooks, in partial answer to your, to your question, we asked council to approve one point three million, a budget of, and that was approved by council, then we had some additional donations to complete the project, and Sam or Vicky, one will give you those donations.
We approved that, but that was a budget amendment, correct? One point three? Was a budget amendment?
It was.
Okay, then.
It was.
And then, um.
Then the donations on top of that to finish the project.
Right, and then, um, so I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile the two forty-five from the city as well, so that would be one point five four from the city with the two forty-five, two hundred forty-five thousand plus the one point three in the budget amendment. I'm just trying to look at the city's obligation.
Mr. Brooks, we had two hundred forty-five thousand to start this thing with.
Okay.
And we, we borrowed one million, three hundred, I mean, we, we took from, from fund balance and capital, one point three million. That gave us one point five four five.
Okay.
And then we had some, uh, we had fifty thousand in waste management, we had a hundred thousand from an anonymous donor, made a sixteen ninety-five. We spent twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and a hundred fifty-nine thousand, one seventy-seven to lay out the bank and left us with, with right now, one million, five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars.
And we'll be able to get it done for that?
We will. This contract that if you award it today is one million, three hundred, twenty-two thousand, three hundred, sixty-two dollars to Heron Construction Company.
Okay, we, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Probably need a second.
We, I just have a question.
Anita, do we have a second?
I didn't hear a second.
Okay.
I'd like to have a discussion about the project.
Sure. Come on up.
Did you get a second?
We get a second?
No.
Had a second.
Who seconded?
I made a motion, I thought I was joining in.
Second, yeah.
Okay, we do, we do have a motion and a second for approval of the contract with Heron? Heron Construction Company?
Heron Construction Company.
In the amount of?
One million, three hundred, twenty-two thousand, three hundred, sixty-two dollars.
Okay, all right.
Okay, question, question, of course, she speaks, if may, on the, uh, the money that we've got available. We had budgeted some capital outlay items also in the previous budget, that some of that money is going to be included for, and we got enough to cover that in the, in the, in the cost of constructing the building?
His question.
Sir, when we closed the books last year on capital, we had enough money to take this, and I, I contacted the auditors, and we had enough money to take the one million, three hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance for capital, over and above all that carryover debt.
Okay, but you're saying that we've got some of that, some of that money that, that, not the one point three million, but the other money that you're adding to the total was for some capital outlay expenditures, I thought, that we haven't spent yet?
Yeah, we had already funded all the, all the budget items for capital for this year, and we still had three million dollars left over. And we took it out of that one point three. We had, we had one point five million dollars in car- in carryover last year, and that left us about one million, one million, five hundred thousand dollars to take that out. I, I checked with Jack Woods, and he confirmed my numbers.
Okay, so we're running up to cover whatever capital expenditures we budgeted, not, not for the building itself, but for that?
We're not, we're not with that, yes, sir.
Sir?
They were, they were not involved in that one point three million. The capital that we budgeted for last year, we, we borrowed nine million dollars, that's what we budgeted last year. That's for building, building, uh, courthouse, and six million dollars for resurfacing and equipment.
Okay. Does anybody understand my question?
Okay, I guess, I guess you're asking, did any capital come out of any other project to go into the one point three million?
No, of the, I thought we budgeted for some capital outlay expenditures, not the building, for some other capital expenditures for animal care, and I want to make sure that we're not using that money for the building.
Sir, we budgeted originally two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for animal care three years ago, when Tom and I looked at the thing and said we could build a stone building for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Then we added twenty-five thousand dollars to that out of our contribution to, to the Humane Society. That left us two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. The rest of the money is donated money for us. We've not touched it. We, we spent out of that, out of that money, two, two cents money, twenty-seven thousand and one hundred fifty-nine thousand, out of the three hundred ninety-five thousand we had before we asked for the one point three million.
I think initially, we're talking about renovating the existing facility for two hundred something thousand. Obviously, that wasn't going to get us where we, where we needed to be, and that's, definitely that's why we're here today to, to get a new facility on Canalco Drive.
So, for clarity, if we borrow this, I mean, if we allocate this one point three million dollars, will there be any other expenditures that we'll need this fiscal year?
Not this fiscal year, no.
Not this fiscal year, but.
Council needs to remember, we have the existing building. We're going to be short probably on, on furnishing, the, the facility. Remember, we have the existing building, which will go up for sale probably four or five months prior to the other building being completed. Once it's sold, then obviously that funding could, if council approves, go into the furnishings and the, especially the quarantine center.
So, according, I guess, Sam, with the numbers you've given us recently, for the building, it looks like the city is in for about a million, five hundred and forty-five thousand? Is that correct? If you take out the donation from Waste Management and the donor?
We, we have a mi- we have, we, we now have a million, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that the city's putting into the project.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then, I guess, if, if we award the contract to Heron Construction for one point three roughly, do we, what happens to the remainder of those funds that we've allocated?
We're, we're going to need it for some incidentals such as some curving and stuff like that. You know, this is putting a building on the ground, getting it ready, is it, is the one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand that, that you've got?
One three twenty-two.
Now, one three twenty-two. We've got that, and then we've got some subsidiary stuff that's got to be done after the building's on the ground.
I guess my question is, does the one, Susan, what you just said, does the one three twenty-two include the budget amendment of one point three? Is that so?
Include the budget amendment?
Right. I'm looking at, I'm looking at Sam.
The budget that we asked you all for last, last fall?
Right. We already voted on that.
Was one point three million dollars. No other money was asked for. That's what we needed to finish the job.
At that time.
After the mayor and I discussed it. Yes.
At that time.
And this amount of one three two-two does include the one hundred thousand dollar donation and the fifty thousand dollar donation from Waste Management.
And the one point three of the budget amendment that we approved?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would you introduce yourself, please, to the record?
Yes, sure. My name's Karen Byers. I'm the director of West to Sea Spay and Neuter. We've spayed and neutered fifteen hundred pets since we started in two thousand and six. I'm asking that you know that there is opposition to this plan for the Animal Care Center. We believe that it is the wrong way to handle animal population by warehousing animals, so we ask that you consider that this is an expensive way to handle the overpopulation, and it will do nothing to address the actual problem, which is too many strays that are reproducing on the streets. We don't believe that a full shelter is attractive to the city. A no-kill shelter is an outdated term that is disingenuous in a community where you're turning away animals at the door when it's filled. There will still be animals on the street that are reproducing. They are a burden for taxpayers. I talk to them every day, and the Animal Care Center is just going to be yet another rescue that's going to fill up like the one that exists now.
Nick, would you like to respond? We have an ordinance coming up next month for the council to consider.
Yes, I believe you have it in your hands, the amended animal ordinance with the addition of the spay-neuter involved, and that is a very positive ordinance. It gives lots of exemptions for lots of reasons. There is an unaltered animal fee of twenty dollars per animal per year. It's very reasonable. Half of those.
And that is a very positive ordinance. It gives lots of exemptions for lots of reasons. There is an unaltered animal fee of $20 per animal per year. It's very reasonable. Half of those funds will go to the West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation. We have a spay-neuter program that we already have up and going. It's been going for about 18 months now. It's a very simple program that we run, and it doesn't have any income issues.
Lower cost, lower cost for...
It's lower cost. The people find their vet, and their vet agrees to do the spay or neuter. They make the appointment, they have the procedure done, and then the vet bills us the foundation, and it's $60 that we, that we have for it. The, the, the Animal Care Center is not a warehouse. You know, we all intend purpose that the quarantine side, they will come in and have their vet taken care of and be spayed and neutered, and then go over to the animal adoption side, which is the public side, where people can come in and adopt the animals. We do not see this as warehousing at all. The current Animal Care Center facility that the city graciously assumed responsibility for in, in October routinely adopts out many animals every month. It is not a warehousing facility at all. And then the spay-neuter ordinance that we hope you will look at very seriously for next month does involve a way to help people who can't get their animals, who want to get their animals altered but cannot pay for it.
May I speak on the ordinance as well?
Pardon me?
May I speak on the ordinance as well?
Yes, it'll be next month. Thank you all for your comments. We have a motion, a second. Any additional questions from council?
I have a question. Karen?
Yes.
Can you respond to what she just said?
The spay-neuter ordinance, the ASPCA has a position statement, paper that is, does not support mandatory spay-neuter laws because it's likely to, they're, well, simply unenforceable. I don't know how you're going to get, you know, decide who's been spaying their pets or not. It's also, if it is enforced, would be, have the, would probably work with the most vulnerable pet owners. The people that are actually the problem will probably not be reached through a spay-neuter ordinance as well. What it does is actually drives up shelter intake because people cannot afford to keep their pets. They cannot afford to get their pets fixed. So punishing those folks with, with fines is exactly the opposite of what you want to do to solve the problem.
Ma'am, go ahead, please.
So what are your suggestions?
Low-cost spay-neuter, affordable spay-neuter for low-income people who are taking in strays off the street.
Is that what we're not doing? Is that what we're doing with the new ordinance?
I would like you to ask her how many spay-neuters they've done with community pet, with community...
Well, I mean, we're, we're...
Have you seen our ordinance?
I have, sir, yes.
And you don't approve of it?
Well, I do not.
The, the ordinance is, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not mandatory. There is, if you do not want to alter your animals, that is fine. You just pay this annual fee, and that money goes to help people spay and neuter their animal. So it's a positive ordinance, and it's not punitive, and it will be completely complaint-driven. So it will not, we will not drive around and look in the backyards of people's houses to see if their animals have been spayed or neutered. It's a very positive ordinance. If you read it, lots of exemptions for, for specific types of pets. And it's a starting place for our community. You know, I have a long history of this with you. It's a starting place. It's positive. And the foundation has already a process in place to help people get spay and neuter. We do them three or four a week now. So we just encourage you next month to take a real hard look at that.
I'm taking five cats to Paris, Tennessee on Thursday because there's nowhere, because they provide low-cost spay-neuter. So I'm picking up cats in a van from Jackson that people own, and they've taken them from the street, and I'm driving them to Paris on Thursday. 15 cats, and I do it just about every week.
Karen, I, I would suggest that you share with us the ASPCA article that you referenced, and would encourage you to come to the meeting when we take up that issue.
And I shared a lot of these, there are a number of white papers I shared on an email with all of you yesterday morning when I realized that, I'd been told this is a done deal all along, and now that I realize that there's actually a vote that's important, I, I wanted to come and talk to you again.
Karen?
Yes.
We hear you, and we appreciate you coming. Thank you. We've been dealing with this problem for quite a while. Even when the county had it, it was quite a problem.
Yes.
This is a big step for us. This is a lot of money. It's a big step.
I understand.
It's been well thought through. It's, it's, we've been on this for a long time. I've been a strong advocate for it.
I understand.
I am shocked at the amount of money it's going to cost, but if we're going to do it, it will solve a problem we've had for many years.
I don't agree that it would solve the problem.
We're solving a problem. Now, I hear you.
Thank you.
But I do think the ordinance, the way I've read it, will address a lot of what is concerning you. And I agree with Councilman Brooks. Take a look at it, and yes, if you have suggestions for lines or parts of it that can be improved, we're always open to that. We want to make it as, as good as possible.
As good as a spay...
But ordinances can be changed. Ordinances can be tweaked. But I hate to see this opportunity to go by, to do something that is going to radically change the way things have been before.
If I may say one more thing. Our community goal, our community's goal should be less rescue than, than, and this is building more kennels in a community that's already saturated with pets. Less desirable animals will remain in cages for even longer, weeks, months, or years. And I have been to the Humane Society, and that is the case at the Humane Society. Animals are in cages for months and years. There are those in the, in the animal advocate world who would call that a fate worse than death for an companion animal to be in a cage that long. The term no-kill is considered by some to actually be inhumane because it is imprecise and it is disingenuous. When we call a facility no-kill that is turning away animals at the door, they will roam, they will be a burden on, on our people, and they will eventually be euthanized. So our, our goal should be for our community to be no-kill, which would involve an aggressive spay-neuter program. And it, the rescuing doesn't help. It does not address the cat problem. We have feral cats everywhere. There's a lot more that can be done through spay-neutering that can be done than can what be done through putting animals in cages.
Ma'am, if I may, to, to address our questions about animals, how long they're kept there, what's, what's their move from the Animal Care Center over the Adoption Center? How, how long do they stay in the Adoption Center before we make the determination they're not going to be adoptable?
There's some time limit, but we don't have any apples there. They have been there over the years.
Good. My concern is that we have animals there for a long term. We've got animals that we got to turn away that could be adoptable because we've got the other ones, and it falls back on what she's saying, is having them in cages and...
Well, one of the, one of the components of this is we are partnering with the rescues, and we will allow the rescues to come in while the animals are in quarantine and pull some of them so that we will continue to have the rotation of animals, and they will not sit. That is part, a component of this that we worked on.
So we're looking at that, and you try to not...
That is part of, we have, when we, when the city assumed responsibility, we have a committee set up. The mayor did, with the rescues and myself and Frank McMean and Kathleen Honeycutt and Harry Henry. And we have developed policies and procedures that deal with every issue from no-kill to our, our interaction with the rescues and getting the animals in, to job descriptions. I mean, we wrote all the policies and procedures for this new facility and the current one that they're in.
And I know we're not discussing the, the spay and neuter today. That's for, for next month. But, but would it be possible that some of those spay and neuter funds, rather than creating a new organization for spay and neuter like you have, to fund her organization, let her handle the spay and neuter, at least to be considered?
Sure. I mean, that's up to council. That's completely up to council. It just, does need to go to spay and neuter.
May I say that spay and neuter is not separate from rescue and from sheltering? It's, it's, we all need to be working together. I did try to speak with Vicky Lake on, in, in 2016. I know that you were aware that I was having some opposition, so I'm sorry to be last minute on this, to be talking to you so last minute, but I have tried to speak with the committee about this. And spay-neuter, as advocates, have not been at the table in the planning of this project.
Let me ask a question. Wouldn't, in, in their part in there, that when the animal comes in, there'll be a, a doctor of animals that will decide whether that animal is, they can't fix it. He's too sick and everything, and, and he'll be euthanized.
Yes, there is a policy that the, that is completely veterinarian-driven.
Right, and then if they say that he is all right, then we'll try to keep him.
Yes.
Do you understand that, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I understand. We've been working for years. We didn't have anything but a pound here that helped the dogs a little while and then did away with it. Here we are, as a city, trying to establish a better care for animals. I understand, I'm not completely satisfied with it, but we got to start somewhere. Or do we leave it like it is?
That's right.
That's the whole thing in a nutshell. We're trying.
A larger facility is just going to fill up just as, and you can spend all the money on it, and it's just going to fill up as well.
Well, what do you suggest we do then? Just leave them on the street?
I suggest you use sheltering, which already exists in the community for, for taking in strays and euthanizing the animals that need to be euthanized. We have rescues, hundreds of rescues coming out of here that can rescue.
The city needs to be involved.
Well, I, I mean, I, no, I don't think that the animal, that the city needs to be involved in the rescue business. I think it's a bad use of taxpayer money. And I'm, I'm an animal, I, every day I answer the phone from poor people who need assistance, and I still think it's a bad...
Maybe halfway, there's still a lot of animals running the streets.
And there are plenty of municipal shelters that are not being used effectively.
I just want to remind the council that the original impetus for me to be here today came with the Safe Neighborhoods Task Force in 2007, where they recommended for the safety and security and future of our city that we look at these issues. And that's, remember, where this started. And the, the new Animal Care Center will provide a state-of-the-art facility for us to provide for the safety and security of the animals and the community, and get all the animals into their forever homes. Whether a cat or a dog or other animals they occasionally get out at the Animal Care Center. But this is a very positive step for our community to take.
I have a question.
Yes. I have a quick question.
Okay, we have, now the question has been called for. We have a, we have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item two is consideration of contract for professional services for 2019 TVA Invest Prep Grant.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration contract for professional services for the 2019 ECD Site Development Grant.
So move.
Have a motion, a second. No second? Discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item four is consideration of resolution to enter into contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for an industrial access road to connect to State Highway 223. That's on our industrial park.
Scott, can you just explain what that is real quick?
Well, all three of these items are kind of connected. The Invest Prep Grant was what we initially received for the development of the industrial park off of 223. Part of that grant funds the design of a connector road, 223, to service the industrial property. And we plan to design that road with these grant funds and then use that design to apply for a, a SIA grant. At this point, the state just needed a resolution in order to open a project because they know that the Invest Prep Grant will be funding the design. That way they'll have a project open that they can review and, and go through that process while we design that, that road.
Thanks.
Any other questions, council? We have a motion, second?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
No, he's not here.
The vote is unanimous.
Charlie, though.
Thank you.
Do we have a vote count?
Yes.
Is it, okay, okay. Okay, we have some board appointments. Item five is West Tennessee Healthcare Board, reapportment of Danny Wheeler.
So move, second.
Motion, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Will we vote on this time of law?
West Tennessee.
West Tennessee Healthcare Board.
Okay.
This is Dog Committee, Ellen Demming, reapportment.
So move.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
Jackson Madison County Historic Zoning Commission, Wayne Arnold, reapportment.
So move.
Second discussion, council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
Have some reapportments to the Ned McQuirter Board, Jerry Gay, Linda K. Farree, Linda Baker, and Glenn Fessmeyer.
So move.
Motion, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Keith Jackson Beautiful Commission, it's Sherry Taylor, reapportment.
So move.
Second.
Co-advisory and appeals board. Okay, vote. Sorry.
All right, it was spoken or by vote?
Yep.
Okay, the vote is unanimous.
Anita, you showed the motion to second on that, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Co-advisory board, David Hallton, reapportment, and Al Crocker.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
The Jackson Transit Authority have three reapportments, Donna Hill, Lavelle Hayes, and Richard Donnell.
So move, second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Board of Equalization, we have a new appointment, Reggie Smith. You have his resume, I think, in front of you. And Virginia Williamson, who is reapportment.
So move.
Of motion, second. Second discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And budget five is budget amendments. Karen, I hope you're going to tell me we do not have any budget amendments. She's not here, so it means we'd have no budget amendments. Good, okay. Consideration of invoices over $10,000?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting adjourned.